Hello, everyone, and welcome. We're going to get started here in about a minute. We're just going to give people time to enter the Zoom room. All right, we're at about one minute after. I think we're going to get our webinar today rolling. Thank you, everyone, for being here. My name is Joe Olson. I do communications here at Fresh Energy, and thank you for joining us for a conversation about Fresh Energy's recommendations for a special session. Today, we'll be hearing from Michael Noble, Fresh Energy's Executive Director, Justin Fay, Director of Government Affairs, and Ben Passer, Director of Energy Access and Equity. So we're going to be taking about the first half hour of this webinar to go through Fresh Energy's four recommendations for immediate action during the special session. And then the second half hour, we're going to open up to your questions. One request is to please use the Q and A function in Zoom if you are able. If you click the button at the bottom of your screen that says Q and A, it will pull up a box, and you can submit questions. You can upload other people's questions. You can use chat to talk to each other or talk to panelists, but please don't submit questions there. And with that, I think I'm going to turn things over to Michael Noble to kick off the conversation. Welcome, Michael.
Thank you so much, Joe, and welcome, Fresh Energy friends and colleagues. We wanted to take time to very, very informally talk about our special session recommendations. The session is supposed to begin tomorrow, and we've been thinking about what views we're going to put forward in the public to pursue with our policy strategies and our lobbyists and our public voice during the special session. And a lot of what has motivated us is what's motivating everyone and making everyone especially tuned into the issues of race and oppression and injustice in our community. It was the murder of George Floyd, Mr. George Floyd, at 38th and Chicago on Memorial Day. And I just want to say that when that happened, within 48 hours, we made a decision. We had to publicly speak to that. We issued a statement the following day. Everybody on your screen worked with me on that statement. It was moving. It was difficult. But I think it was also powerful that we publicly spoke up that this is an organization here that's been focusing on their clean energy economy for 30 years. And we recognize we're an organization with some influence, and we have a platform, and we've acquired some power. But we're also really an institution that's grounded in privilege. And you know, that decades and decades of injustice and oppression benefits Fresh Energy because we're a creature of American philanthropy. And American philanthropy is a creature of American wealth. And American wealth has been, in part, comforted and comfortable with and supportive of this system of injustice and oppression that's basically endured since the Civil War and before. So you can read our statement. It's on our website. It's short, and it acknowledges the privilege, but it also calls on Fresh Energy to find a voice and find a way to be an anti-racist organization. At the same time, we're being a clean energy economy organization and a climate action organization. We are an anti-racist organization. And it's new for us. We've been working on these issues the last three years. We've been applying some intentionality. But we wanted today to talk about our special session agenda because we want to follow up words with actions. Words are not enough at this time. We have to have action, and we have to have agency, and we have to have voice. And a public policy that does no harm on racial inequity is not enough. We need public policy that dismantles racial inequity. And this first step of public policy advocacy against aggression and oppression and injustice, this is not the be all, this is not the end all. You know, and as a white leader of a privileged organization, I don't want to be white-centered about our voice. I want to listen and learn and elevate other voices that I can learn from and that Fresh Energy can learn from as we go down this path of learning what it means to be an anti-racist organization. So with that, I'm going to turn the program over. And I guess, Joe, are you going to introduce our next speaker?
Yeah, Justin, if you could take a moment to tell us a little bit about what a special session will look like this summer, what we can expect to see and hear from folks.
Sure, well, that's really the question of the hour, isn't it? You know, we've got a little bit of clarity at this stage. The governor announced yesterday that he was calling a special session to begin at 12 o'clock noon tomorrow, Friday. And what's interesting about this special session is opposed to how special sessions normally work, is this one hasn't been negotiated in any specific way. Typically, in Minnesota, special sessions, when the governor calls it, what you see is an agreement at the front end that the governor and the four caucus leaders agree, you know, we're going to meet in special session on this day. We're going to work on these issues and only these issues, and we're going to adjourn by this day. What the governor has actually done here is announce that the special session is starting at 12 o'clock noon tomorrow. And then that's it. There's not an agreement among the leaders over what is or isn't on the agenda. There's not an agreement among the leaders about when it's going to end. And because of the statutes that govern the governor's peacetime emergency powers, it is possible, if not likely, that we will need to do this again in about a month. Though the way I understand the law is that the legislature has to have the opportunity to vote on whether or not to continue the governor's peacetime emergency powers every 30 days. So they don't have to pass it. They don't actually have to. It's sort of like how confirmations work in Minnesota. They get a sort of a veto, basically. But they have to have the opportunity to take a vote, which means that they need to be in session. So even if they came in tomorrow in special session, convened, and then adjourned right away, which is not going to happen, they would still have to come back in July and every 30 days subsequently until the governor, either the legislature by vote of both chambers ended the peacetime order, emergency order, or the governor rescinded it. So we may be in for a long summer of special session or not. We don't really know yet. But we do know that it's starting tomorrow at 12 o'clock.
Thank you for that, Justin. That's a good 101. And good affirmation, too, that we're not really sure what will happen. That said, Fresh Energy did put lots of thought into some key recommendations for what could happen in this special session. So recommendation number one is to prioritize transformational police reform and community recovery. Justin, would you like to get us started on this conversation point?
Sure. So this is, you know, this is a... We weren't sure how it was going to be received having an organization like Fresh Energy make, you know, include this explicitly in a set of recommendations, policy recommendations for special session. It's a little bit outside of the scope of what we normally work on. And I think we were, you know, my guess is there's probably at least one person watching the webinar who might be thinking that that's curious or that maybe we should, you know, take a step back or stay in our lane, so to speak. But, you know, we, after a lot of internal discussion, really weren't comfortable with that. You know, there's, I think, a track record or a pattern of frankly, white-led environmental and energy organizations, you know, giving voice to and expressing the desire to work more closely with BIPOC-led organizations and communities of color, but implicitly only on the terms that the white-led organization is comfortable with. And it simply is not reasonable to expect that folks in a community that are bearing the acute trauma that we've seen on display in Minneapolis and St. Paul in recent weeks, that those groups, that those folks are able and can reasonably be expected to respond to things like petitions around climate action or engaging in, you know, discussions around climate policy at the Minnesota Legislature until and unless, you know, much more immediate threats to safety and wellness and well-being are addressed significantly. So we felt it was important to name that, to name that black people in Minneapolis are seven times more likely to suffer from the use of force by Minneapolis police than white residents. And that is a result of, you know, decades of systemic racism. And that we have an obligation, for the reasons that Michael named, to call that out. I do want to acknowledge, we were very careful when we put this recommendation together in our blog that we're not recommending a particular policy approach. We're simply naming the issue as the appropriate top priority for a special session. We don't have expertise on public safety and criminal justice. We don't pretend to. And it is uncomfortable for Fresh Energy to, you know, historically, we've been uncomfortable speaking on issues that we don't have expertise on. And so that's another area where we're, I think, departing from, another way in which we're departing from our normal course of business. But we are calling for action. There are a variety of meaningful, thoughtful, robust ideas that have been put forward by stakeholders, by elected officials and others. And our expectation is that the legislature take those seriously and act in special session.
And I would just add to, Justin, thank you for that having powerful overview of this first priority for us. I think it's incredibly important to ensure that as communities recover and begin to rebuild, that they are directly involved in these conversations. And I think this is something that we were already kind of thinking about as it related to COVID-19 and the related economic downturn. But I think it's become even more kind of acutely obvious just with respect to the actual physical destruction of some really vital hubs in communities across Minneapolis and St. Paul. And so I think it's incredibly important to ensure that communities are part of any conversations related to, you know, economic reinvestment and recovery in those communities and ensuring that, you know, it's not an opportunity to, you know, turn over certain areas of communities or, you know, lead to worse crises like gentrification or displacement. So I think, you know, we want to do our part to ensure that we're lending our voice to, you know, really uplifting community voices in those conversations. And I think that that's a significant priority for us as well.
All right, thank you. With that, I think we can move on to the second recommendation. Protect communities disproportionately affected by COVID-19. Ben, I know you've been putting a lot of work into this recommendation. Do you want to kick off the conversation here?
Absolutely, thanks, Joe. So we acknowledged, you know, I think the understandable attention around systemic racism, police brutality, and related injustices. However, we also want to acknowledge that there is this ongoing crisis of the COVID-19 pandemic. And this is something that Fresh Energy's been working on pretty intensely for the last three months. And it's well documented that the pandemic is disproportionately affecting people of color across the country in terms of health impacts, but also economic hardships as a result of the pandemic are disproportionately affecting people of color and under-resourced communities. So we've, you know, been working and tracking individual utility actions in the energy sector to protect customers, especially those who are facing economic hardships during this time. But, you know, while we're encouraged to see individual voluntary utility actions, we also, you know, still see a need for comprehensive statewide action. I think, you know, the reason this matters is because there are certain areas of the state that are still not protected by some of these actions that we've seen utilities taking in various parts of the state. Also, there's not currently a known duration that those protections will remain. So, you know, those are really subject to utilities kind of own discretion on when the pandemic and recovery period is over. And so we think there's a significant opportunity and, you know, I would argue, a need from decision-makers in the state to ensure that all customers in Minnesota, in terms of their energy and water utility service, are able to maintain safe, reliable, affordable service during this time. So we have set out a number of recommendations which are available on our website. And we also sent to Governor Walz and filed with the Public Utilities Commission around protections that energy and water customers throughout the state need during this time. So ensuring that folks are not shut off from their utility service. Anyone who has, you know, previously been shut off is safely reconnected, recognizing that, you know, utility employees are also at risk of contracting COVID-19 during this time. So ensuring that, you know, as safe as possible following the appropriate protocols, those customers are safely reconnected. Also, some of the kind of standard practices around payments and financing, so late fees, you know, accruing interest, things like that, ensuring that customers aren't subject to those kind of standard protocols during this time. And also are receiving extended payment plans, just kind of recognizing the unique circumstances of this time. We really think that these are just a sampling of, you know, potential actions that the legislature could take up during a special session and pass for statewide protections for all customers. There's also, I think, a need on the housing side as well. And we've been working closely with our housing partners around housing assistance. This is something that's been discussed through previous coronavirus relief bills at the federal level, but ensuring that folks have assistance to pay rent payments, mortgage payments, and utility expenses. So again, recognizing, you know, kind of the unique circumstances of this time, what are some potential financial assistance packages that we can be thinking about, not just on the energy side, but on the housing side as well?
And, you know, Ben, I think that's one thing I think is just important to sort of add to this for a little bit of extra context is, you know, in large part because of the, you know, what's happened with our state's economy in the last several months as a result of the pandemic, that pressure on state budgets and public, just public resources more broadly is going to be, you know, at a level probably that at least I haven't seen in the time that I've been working in in and around government in Minnesota. And that makes it more rather than less important for, you know, the types of recovery and investments that you're talking about, Ben, to be prioritized. Because, you know, everybody who has an interest in the state budget is going to be clamoring and scraping and clinging for support right now. And it's going to be, it's incumbent on all of us to make sure that those public dollars are used and targeted wisely and strategically and as much as possible according to need and urgency.
Thanks, Justin. I think that's, I think that's a really important point. And just one comment in the chat that I wanted to touch on while we're here. I want to be totally clear that our recommendations apply to all energy and water utilities. So focus not just on electricity, but on natural gas as well. And I think importantly, one thing that I glossed over, part of the, part of our purpose in writing our letter to the governor is that this would also include customers of delivered fuel services who are outside of Public Utilities Commission action. So the PUC has opened an inquiry into what can be done around the COVID-19 pandemic. But I think importantly, leaves out customers of delivered fuel services as well. And so our hope in going to the governor and really, you know, pushing for a comprehensive statewide action is ensuring that we're not just, you know, focused on any specific fuel type, but including electricity, natural gas, and delivered fuels, as well as customers of water utilities. So really focusing on those essential utility services that customers need during this time.
Right, thank you. With that, I think we'll move on to item number three. Prioritize bonding investments in transit and affordable housing. And just one quick note, and I know that there are a lot of questions whirling up, and I'm really excited for us to get to them at the end of the discussion. Please use the Q and A box to submit them, and we will definitely have a dedicated amount of time to get to those as well. So, all right, item number three. I think, Ben, do you want to get us started here?
Absolutely. So really, the 2020 legislative session left the question of a bonding bill unfinished. And so this is kind of, you know, standard practice for the legislature. But we see a really important opportunity to advance equity in any bonding package that may come out of a special session. We've been working with a number of partner organizations around clean transportation and equitable investments in transportation. And we found that transportation expenses are, you know, in particular, a significant burden for under-resourced communities. One of our, on the housing side, one of our partners, Minnesota Housing Partnership, also puts out a biannual State of the States Housing Report. And similarly found that cost burdens are much higher for under-resourced households and households of color experience double the cost burden of white households. So all that to say, there's, you know, a significant role that the state can play in really addressing some of these inequities. And we also recognize that there's significant climate benefits in investing in quality transportation options and quality housing as well. So we laid out a few kind of main areas that we think a bonding package could cover around transit and transportation jobs, housing infrastructure, as well as public housing rehabilitation. And I'll just note, before turning it over to Justin for a little bit more context here, bonding could also include some of the housing assistance dollars that I mentioned previously with respect to COVID-19. I think there's some really significant overlap in terms of bonding for housing assistance, as well as some of the longer-term housing infrastructure bonds that might traditionally be considered here. So, Justin, did you want to mention more on this piece?
Sure. I think just a couple, again, to add a little bit of kind of context. You know, the bonding bill is, you know, a fairly typical, it was expected coming into the 2020 session to be kind of the flagship agenda item for the year. The House and Senate both attempted to pass and failed to pass versions, separate versions of their bonding bill. And, you know, one of the, the sort of pieces of conversation around bonding, before you even have a chance to talk about individual projects and how to prioritize, is how big a bonding bill should be. And that is often driven, to a large degree, by just political ideology and kind of competing kind of more overarching political objectives that respective parties have. The reality is Minnesota's debt obligation right now is so low that there is no compelling technical reason why we cannot pass a very large, like, significantly larger than we've ever passed before level bonding bill. So I think that's an important, just sort of like, place to be grounded in that when we make, as advocates, when we make recommendations on specific appropriations or specific projects that we want to have supported in the bonding bill, there's really no reason why we need to be moderating ourselves here. There's, the state has ample ability to provide support using this tool. Arguably, bonding is where the state legislature and frankly, the state of Minnesota broadly has the most ability to move resources right now. And it's, we think it's very, very important to push and push hard. Personally, I've had, I've been more involved in transit work over the years than in housing work. So I don't have the depth of housing experience, housing policy and advocacy experience that Ben has and that maybe folks in the, that are participating in the webinar have. But with transit, you know, every year, there's an effort to get transit money in the bonding bill, and almost every year, it fails. We get peanuts or we get nothing. And the bottom line is that the state of Minnesota has not made a significant, large-scale investment in transit since the governor Polynice veto was overwritten in 2007. That was 13 years ago. It is way past time, and we're absolutely committed to fighting for that in a special session.
All right, with that, I think we'll move on to the final recommendation. Allocate the Renewable Development Account to energy projects in under-resourced communities. This one is a bit complex. Justin, do you want to start the conversation for us?
Sure. So the, for folks who maybe aren't familiar, the Renewable Development Account, which was previously known as the Renewable Development Fund, is dates back to the mid 1990s. It was part of an agreement or a deal that was struck that allowed for the storage of nuclear, spent nuclear waste at Prairie Island, the nuclear facility that's adjacent to Red Wing in the Prairie Island Indian Community. And subsequently, a few years later, was expanded to include dry cask nuclear waste storage at Monticello, which is Xcel Energy's other nuclear facility in Minnesota. The way the revenue is generated for the fund is an assessment per cask. So for each storage container, there's, I believe, it's $500,000 assessment for the casks at Prairie Island, and I think it's $350,000 for the casks at Monticello. I'm not 100% sure on that. And that goes into a fund. It's called the Renewable Development Account. And the way that that account currently works in state law is that the state collects this money from Xcel Energy. Xcel pays them twice a year to it. And then the state legislature has the ability to appropriate funding out of it. Similar to bonding, this is another area where the legislature has simply failed for several years running to get its act together and move money in accordance with how the fund is supposed to be used. There've been a couple of small appropriations in previous sessions, but very, very little. This, on the last day of the legislative session in May this year, the legislature did actually pass an RDA spending bill. It did several important things and worthwhile projects, including the Prairie Island Net Zero Community Project, as well as an expansion and extension of Xcel Energy's Solar Rewards Program, which is incentives for rooftop solar and then a couple of other smaller projects as well. So we were very happy to see that get done. It was an important first step. But that bill left about $55 million on the bottom line in the Renewable Development Account. So that's money that is under the control of the state of Minnesota that can be expended and does not have an impact on the state's general fund. So the idea that we would leave that money untouched and unspent in this time of crisis doesn't make a lot of sense to us. So the suggestion that we are the recommendation that we included, are including in our, the blog that we posted and will be taking to the legislature is that the entire remaining current balance of the Renewable Development Account be used. remaining current balance of the Renewable Development Account be used for energy grants specifically to communities that have been most disproportionately impacted by recent civil unrest and by economic and racial disparity. And so there's some description of exactly how we would target that in the write-up that we posted. But the, the hope that we have is that this is a way to get at least some money moving and moving quickly. It doesn't require action by the Public Utilities Commission. It doesn't require, there's not an elaborate process that needs to happen here. The state really can just appropriate it. And and money can be fairly quickly moved out into communities to do good work. So that's the idea. And we're, we're working on it in real time. The clock is ticking, obviously with special session starting in 22 hours and 59 minutes. But we're hopeful that we can move some of those resources before they adjourn.
And I would just add to that piece. I think this is another area where we think community input is incredibly important. So as, you know, project and program opportunities arise, as these opportunities for, you know, direct funding and investments in under-resourced communities and communities of color do come up, that, you know, we want to, our hope is that these grants are tailored in a way that has already been, I think, a product of significant, significant community input, but also, you know, the formation and implementation of those projects is informed by additional community input as well. So our hope is to ensure that, you know, this is one step toward those direct investments, but we also want to ensure that community members and those folks who are working in and with under-resourced communities and communities of color have significant input into how those dollars are actually spent.
All right. Thank you. So those are the four key recommendations. And if you like some or all of what you've heard here today, we would encourage you to tell your legislators. We have summarized these recommendations in a letter on our website that you can copy, paste, and edit as much as you want. You can follow the URL on the screen, or it's also in our blog post on the website. On our website under Take Action, you can find it as well. Even if you know your legislators are on the same page as you, it's still really important to reach out and have your voice heard on this issue. The more people they can hear from, the better. And before we get to the Q and A, if you have any friends or colleagues who have missed today's live recording of the webinar, they can catch this entire thing on our website under Publications and Resources. It'll be up probably later today. And also, it will be released via our podcast called Decarbonize, the Clean Energy Podcast, probably by tomorrow morning, so people can maybe even listen to it before a special session begins. And with that, I think we are ready to tackle some of the questions that have come in through the Q and A chat box. Michael, would you like to kind of drive answering those?
Sure. I really appreciate everybody who came today. And before I dig into the questions, I do want to say one additional thing about this Renewable Development Account. I think we have the right suggestion in all candor that this money should not just sit in this state bank account waiting for another year. There's a lot of urgency. There's a lot of need. And my first, but I also want to tell you, this is an uphill climb because getting consensus on what is an appropriate use of the Renewable Development Account has basically been a unresolved political football for better part of 25 years. It's only been the last few years that it's been fully and totally controlled by the state legislature. But the state legislature has never had a lively, full debate on what, what is the proper use of the Renewable Development Account. So depending on your perspective and where you're from and who your constituencies are and who your voters are, you might come to very, very different conclusions about what a good use of the funds are. So I'm not promising you we can deliver on this, but I'm promising you this is the right thing to do. And so my very, very first two calls on this was I called the president of Xcel Energy, Chris Clark in Minnesota, South Dakota, North Dakota, to tell him that we were going to come with this public advocacy position and ask for his support. And my next call is to call the guy who reports directly to Governor Tim Walz on energy policy, Commissioner Commerce Steve Kelly. I'm going to try to get his support. So it's maybe not a coalition big enough to win, but if we have fresh energy and Xcel Energy and Governor Walz, it's a big enough coalition to get in the conversation. So that's, that is my pledge to you, is try to bring together the Department of Commerce and Fresh Energy and Xcel Energy and Governor Walz to be on the same page as kind of a starting point. But we really only started this initiative 48 hours ago, and go time is tomorrow afternoon. So I just want you to know we're ambitious, but not promising. So getting back to the, the questions, the very, very first question does actually come in about police reform. And, you know, the point is being made that a lot of community organizations are calling for defunding the police or abolishing the police department and starting over. And Fresh Energy's blog post called for transformational reform. How are we addressing the differences between those things? And are we going to be taking positions on those? And I'll throw that to Justin Fay.
Yeah. So we were, we use the phrase transformational reform. I could have a do-over. I'd probably write that a little bit differently. I think what we're attempting to communicate is a desire for broad systemic change for how we deal with public safety and criminal justice. And that can look like a lot of different things. And candidly, I don't feel like I, and I don't feel like Fresh Energy is the right arbiter of what the, what the language is that we should be using and that other folks in the community should be using. So I think we're, we're asking for attention on this issue, and for that, we define the issue as being broad and systemic, and the scope needs to be transformational. And that's, you know, we, beyond that, I don't, it was not our intention to articulate a particular, you know, pick a side in a, you know, you know, dueling set of perspectives. So when we, I just want to be very clear, when we say transformational reform, our use of the word reform in that context is not Fresh Energy committing that we think minor tweaks or the types of proposals that have traditionally been labeled as reform are sufficient. That's a conversation that's going to play out at the legislature, in city halls across the state and elsewhere. And, you know, we're anxious to see where those conversations go and find ways to be helpful.
Okay. Thank you, Justin. The next one I'm going to throw to you, Ben. Are there any specific bills or pieces of legislation that we're backing regarding utility assistance, utility help? Who are the housing partners that we partner with and ally with? Are we supporting one of the specific housing assistance proposals? Which ones? What can you tell us about our work on housing and housing assistance and our allies, especially the utility assistance pieces?
Absolutely. A couple different components to that question, so I'll take them, take them in turn. There's not currently a bill that's been introduced in the legislature regarding utility assistance during the pandemic. We know this is an issue that multiple legislators are interested in and was, I think, kind of gaining traction in the halls of the Capitol virtually, really, you know, when the pandemic first started. But I think with every, with everything else that's, you know, really taken place, especially over the last couple of weeks, as well as kind of the frantic nature of the end of session, there wasn't a specific bill that was introduced. So I think our hope is that during special session, that may be an issue that regains interest and momentum, and hopefully introducing some specific language to that point. On the question of our housing partners, Fresh Energy is one of the co-leads of the Minnesota Multi-Family Affordable Housing Energy Network. That's a mouthful to say every time, so those of you who know us or know our work know the abbreviation of MAMAHEN, which we kind of lovingly use as shorthand to refer to that network. But it's a network of energy and housing partners, which we really formed around the purpose of advancing energy efficiency in multifamily housing. And that network has been around for about six years now. Some of the lead housing players involved on a regular basis are Minnesota Housing Partnership, Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, Common Bond, Project for Pride and Living, and a whole host of others. If you're interested in learning more, you can go to our website, fresh-energy.org/multifamily. But I think we have really strong housing representation in that network, and we, you know, certainly try to take those, those perspectives into account in our own advocacy. As far as, you know, supporting any particular housing assistance proposal, I would say we haven't attached our support to any specific proposal. I think we're, you know, we support our partners' efforts on this, but we know that there are slight differences. So the Walz administration and Minnesota Housing Finance Agency have kind of, you know, set out their recommended amounts for housing bonding. We know Minnesota Housing Partnership is allied with the Homes For All Coalition, and they have, you know, I think a different set of amounts or at least priorities within their campaign. So I think, we think there's a lot of, you know, great ideas on the table, but have not, you know, really thrown our weight behind any, any specific proposal, but really want to see something move forward in a meaningful way. I'll also mention too, I think Representative Howard had advanced some housing-specific protections related to COVID-19, I believe in March, and that, that bill was heard in the House, but ultimately didn't move forward. So I think that's one piece of legislation on the housing side specifically that's been introduced as a result of the pandemic. So some protections around rent and evictions there that I think, you know, are certainly worth further discussion during special session.
Okay, Ben, that's a great thorough answer. Back to the subject of transit funding, I'm going to throw this to you, Justin. Do you recommend that the base-building organizations that Fresh Energy work with, should they be thinking of action alerts to the senators and to the representatives about transit funding? Or does that actually harm the prospect of transit funding if more progressive voices and progressive groups are the spokespeople, the advocates? And if groups do action alerts, what districts should we be talking about? What are the target priority districts? That's three different questions, so you can click through them as you, as you go.
Yeah. So, you know, I think there's, I want to just say first, there's no one right answer to this question. I think my, my personal experience with advocacy is that there's, there's usually never one right way and one wrong way. There's like a lot of right ways and a lot of wrong ways. So I'll tell you my sort of biases on this question, but it's not the be-all and-all by any means. I think in general, advocates have a tendency to overthink the the risk of doing harm by like being seen as for something and tainting that thing. That, that, that is a thing that happens sometimes, but I think particularly for movement-based organizations and membership organizations that primarily are mobilizing people to talk to their elected officials. I think that's pretty much almost always and almost without exception, a good and appropriate thing to do. Folks talking to their legislators about things that are important to them and that they care about is how our government is supposed to work. And I, I would err on the side of doing more rather than less of that. And not overthinking the targeting too much. If a legislator, you know, if, if an organization has a really large base of folks in South Minneapolis, and you think that those legislators are already with you, that's great. Talk to them anyway. Their constituents should still be engaging, still be talking. And there's always more that can be done from the perspective of legislators. And particularly given where, kind of what the arc of transit in particular has looked like over the last few years, or last, over the last decade and a half. It's not enough to be for it. You know, if folks who represent places like Minneapolis and St. Paul are only for transit, it's not going to get done. Like categorically will not. So oftentimes advocacy and like direct communications from constituents isn't just about persuasion. It can also be about signaling relative priorities. And so, you know, a South Minneapolis house rep or senator who hears from, you know, 150 constituents about the urgent need for transit funding in the bonding bill might compel that legislator to go from being a yes vote, who might, maybe that may be giving a speech on the floor, to actively lobbying their colleagues in caucus and, and before the fix is in for the final vote on the bonding bill. So my advice is whatever, for folks that are, have either work for or are part of organizations like that, that have that capacity, you know, generate constituent contacts often, quickly, as far enough in advance as possible, and with consistency, so that there's, and don't forget, and I will just say this last thought, don't forget about after the session concludes, making sure that there's some accountability, either positively or negatively, based on how the legislature, particular legislators, legislators perform or react. Let them know that you're watching them, not just in the week, that they're leading up to a key vote, but that they don't get to just leave the Capitol or leave their virtual committee hearing on Zoom these days and not have any continued follow-up or repercussions for their actions. That's super important.
So this next question, Justin, I'm going to stick with you. It's also related to the bonding bill and all of our priorities in the bonding bill. And this questioner believes that her own representatives would be favorable and supportive. In her own advocacy, where should she focus her energies? Question beyond my own representatives? Question. Thank you.
Great, great question. First thing, just to kind of continue the thought, is don't take your reps for granted. Make sure that both your state house rep and your state senator hear from you, even if you think they're with you. And you can be specific when you communicate with them. Don't ask for their vote. Ask for their leadership and active work to convince their colleagues to be yes votes. That should be your ask. And push really hard on it, and tell them that you're going to be following up with them after the session to find out how it went. And that, that, that will land in a different way than just, I want your support. So that's number one. I think beyond your immediate representatives, you know, the, the governor really needs to hear from people too. There are a lot of people clamoring for Tim Walz's attention and a lot of issues right now that are in front of the administration, and it's, we have to be louder than we've ever been to have any chance. And even, even if we assume the best of intentions on the part of the folks in the executive branch, the sheer totality of the work that needs to happen right now is going to, is going to result in some things getting left undone and getting left behind. And so the governor really, really needs to hear from people. And that includes both individuals, like, like this question, person who asked this question, and also organizations. If you're doing action alerts, direct them to the gov, make sure that they're being directed to the governor as well as the House and Senate reps. That's, those are the things that come immediately to mind. I would just offer, since this question was specifically about bonding, while it is always best for individual activists to communicate directly with their own representatives, when we're talking about bonding, there are specific committees in the House and Senate, they're the cap, they're called the Capital Investment Committees. The House and Senate, House members and senators that are on those respective committees are going to have outsized, outsized influence on what the composition of bonding bills look like. They're not, none of them are individually like deciders, but they all are in the, in the proverbial room when decisions- the proverbial room when decisions get made. And that's a great, for folks that are looking for a much higher level of advocacy, that is a group of people that I, I think it's totally appropriate to, to reach out to and contact with bonding-specific requests, even if they're not your legislator.
One other thing I want to chime in about the bonding bill. Justin already said that there's no reason to have these old ideological debates about whether a bonding bill is not responsible if it's over $1 billion, or whether a bonding bill could be $2 billion. The other thing that I think everybody on this call is sophisticated enough to know is interest rates are incredibly, incredibly low right now. It's shockingly how cheap the state can borrow money, and the debt service of the state is very, very low. And if, if we ever had a time for rebuilding and we ever, ever needed to use our public borrowing and we ever were in a hole economically, like this would be right now. So the argument that the bonding bill can be $1 billion or 1.1 billion, but if it's 1.9 billion, it's irresponsible, that is just 20-year-old kind of political wisdom that's not wise, is what it is. And we, you know, this is the time to borrow money and to invest in rebuilding. And it was the time when we had a climate crisis alone, and it was a time when we had a climate crisis, climate crisis plus a COVID pandemic crisis. And now we have a climate crisis plus a COVID pandemic crisis and a racial justice crisis that caused the main arterial streets in both of our major cities to be vacated and vitally in need of rebuilding. This is the time for the state to be investing and to be borrowing money at incredibly historic low interest rates. So that's, that's my, my soapbox sermon on that. So I think we answered all the questions. If I, I don't think I missed anybody, but there's one very, very specific question. When will, when will people be able to click on this and share it? What, how are we going to show this via YouTube or, or via podcast joke? Maybe you're, you could say that. Are you going to email it to them or just tell us how that's going to be available?
Yeah, yep. So we will share a link on Facebook and Twitter, probably today, if everything goes well on my end. I'll get it up on our podcast, which will, if you subscribe to the Fresh Energy Podcast called Decarbonize, the Clean Energy Podcast, it will appear in your podcast streaming app tomorrow morning. But also, as soon as I'm able to get this on YouTube, I will post it on Fresh Energy's website as well, under Publications and Resources. So you'd actually be able to stream the video right from there. Like I said, you don't have to watch our website, I'll post on social and you'll see it. I will not send an email, I don't want to clutter up inboxes, but if you have trouble finding it, please don't hesitate to email me directly and I'll send you a link. My email address is olson, O-L-S-O-N, at fresh-energy.org. I think that answers that question. Ben, was there one comment that you wanted to tackle in the chat box?
Yeah, I, there's a question in the chat that I just wanted to respond to briefly and definitely happy to follow up offline. But, hi Matt, thank you, that's a great question and definitely happy to continue the conversation. But the question is around how energy efficiency implementers and similar service providers can ensure that services are being used in Black Indigenous People of Color communities to help them rebuild with sustainability in mind during this time. It's a great question. I think, you know, really starting by reaching out to renter advocacy organizations, neighborhood associations, renter coalitions, those who are really, you know, most directly part of the community and I think are most in tune with the acute situations and dynamics being faced really at the neighborhood level right now is, is the great, is a great place to start. I'll just mention, you know, two of Fresh Energy's partners in St. Paul, Community Stabilization Project, and in Minneapolis, Inquilinos Unidos Por Justicia are both renter advocacy groups and, you know, really work closely in communities. And, you know, IX in particular, I think, is really at the center of a lot of, you know, what we've seen on, you know, on Lake Street in South Minneapolis, and in particular neighborhoods around the Corcoran, Powderhorn, and other areas. And so I think that's, you know, one approach I would suggest is, you know, really making connections with renter advocacy groups, neighborhood coalitions, and associations, and really just, I think, listening to what the needs, you know, currently being faced in those areas are. And then I think connecting the dots to, you know, this is potentially a way to keep costs low, to ensure quality housing, you know, going forward for the long term, to benefiting renters who are facing cost burdens, both, you know, on the energy side and the housing side. And I think just really, you know, helping kind of facilitate those conversations, but, you know, really starting from a place of listening and learning what the needs in the community are right now. So thanks for that question, Matt. I'm definitely happy to keep chatting after the webinar today, but I think it's, you know, a great, great thing to prioritize during this time and I'm happy to continue the conversation.
All right, thank you. And, and with that, I think we are coming up on time. Michael, would you like to close us out with a few words?
Sure. I, I, I just want to say, first of all, thanks to everybody who took an hour today or to be with us. It's really great that we were able to pull this together and 48 hours after announcing it, we have 50 people that signed up. I think 35 people came today. I want to say in closing that, you know, I come to this work with a lot of humility. I don't consider that I have been a racial, racial justice or social justice leader. I have always thought of myself as a clean energy and climate and economic leader on transforming our economy over to a carbon-free one. You could see from the incredible talent that's right on the screen here that people like Justin in Government Affairs and Joe in Communications and Ben, Energy Access and Equity, have really helped me to be a better leader and step forward. What's incumbent on us at this moment is to not expect our our Black community leaders to solve this problem. This is a white problem. This is a problem of oppression, is a problem of systemic change. And it's really, really tricky to both be a spokesperson and leader and acknowledge the humility and the need to learn and the need to listen and the need to follow, at the same time you need to be a leader. So I just want to like highlight the complexity of that. And I also just want to say that, you know, these three people on the screen are extraordinary. I guess you know that already, just been spending an hour with them. But there's 25 other extraordinary people at Fresh Energy, and I'd be remiss if I didn't invite and offer you the opportunity to, if you're not right now, be a Fresh Energy member. Or if you are a Fresh Energy member, consider being a more frequent donor or a monthly donor, you know, having, having your donation on auto pay at your bank or through your checking account or, or your credit card. And then invite you to join our power circle of donors. We have almost 180 donors now that are $1,000 and up. And we would love to have you in that circle if that's in your capacity and your, and your level of commitment. So, you know, I love being employed at Fresh Energy and I'm just very, very appreciative to you, Joe, for having the energy to get us all together and for Justin and Ben for putting together such an extraordinary program today.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And with that, I think we will end, end this webinar one minute early. So thank you for your time and have a great afternoon.